Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Ferndale City Council meeting for Monday, April 23rd, 2018. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Martin, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Leaks May?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Mayor Protempolika?
Here.
Councilmember Piana?
Here.
And Mayor Coulter?
Here, thank you. We have a quorum this evening. Next item of business would be the approval of the agenda.
Your Honor, I'd like to add consent agenda item K to approve proposed settlement of Diorio versus City of Ferndale as recommended by city council.
Support.
All right.
By city council, I mean council, not us city council, sir.
We also have a request to add a presentation and a consent agenda item for an agreement, liquor license agreement with Posh Entertainment and a resolution to rescind their objection.
So that's a consent agenda, all right. That's a consent agenda item?
Yes.
What would be the presentation?
Introduction of a new police officer.
Oh, well, that's a noise. Don't they know the routine of how to get a presentation on the agenda? All right. He's new, we'll give him a break. All right. So, just to be clear, consent agenda K would be the-
Settlement.
The settlement that Dan mentioned, and then L would be the Posh-
Consideration of an agreement and resolution regarding Posh Entertainment. And the resolution would be rescinding the objection to the renewal of the license.
All right. And then a presentation, which would be after the approval of the agenda. All right. So, now that we've amended the heck out of it, is there a motion to accept the amended agenda?
Move to accept the agenda as amended.
Support.
Moved by Dan and Councilman Martin and supported by Mayor Protempolika to approve the agenda as amended. Is there any discussion? All right. Martin, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Protempolika?
Yes.
Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
And Leaks May?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. The agenda is approved. So moving on now to a presentation, and I guess that will be Chief Pelozolo to make a presentation of a new officer, which is always great news.
Sorry for this being short notice, but we've been moving extremely aggressive on recruiting officers. Kevin Jerome served with Gross Point Farms. We stole them, stole him from them. He worked four years with Detroit, previous service, four years in the Marine Corps, numerous citations, Purple Heart, Afghanistan Service Medals, things like that. He's the first officer that we hired with our new lateral program, which allows us to bring in officers a step or two above initial pay, which allows us to bring in officers that, what they're either making now or a little bit above. So, he got sworn in today, along with his one-month-old baby Mia. So, we're happy to introduce our newest officer.
Well, welcome. Welcome to the force, we appreciate it. Where did you do your military service, sir?
I was in the Marine Corps for four years, stationed at Camp Lejeune in Oakdale Island and deployed twice to Afghanistan.
Wow, wow, awesome. Thanks for your service there, and we look forward to your service here as well.
Thank you, Mayor.
Welcome to the force, thank you. All right. Our next item of business would be call to audience. That's your opportunity, if you're here in the audience with us in person, to come on up and address council on any issue that you would like that's not on the agenda, because you can address those issues when we get to that portion of the agenda. So if anyone is here that would like to address council, come on up, give us your name, your address, and three minutes is yours to speak about anything that you would like.
It's that time of year.
It is.
Hello, great to see you.
We're so used to a lineup, you know?
Yeah. You picked us on a quiet night, you should have been here last time.
It's okay. I'm sorry the new officer chief didn't stick around. I'm sorry the new officer didn't stay around. What we have to say would, he would connect with.
He's been on since September 4th, but-
Oh, that's all right. Yeah, yeah, appreciate you doing that, thanks. Yeah, this is great, guys. This is our 10th anniversary this year.
Wow.
Hard to believe, eh, Dan?
Yeah.
Great?
It's hard to believe.
Ten years, yep. We've been walking with these posters, "Michigan Fallen." They're recognizable. The other thing, too, is pretty cool, is that it's a significant milestone for Ferndale. It's 100th year for the Ferndale Memorial Parade, so it's kind of nice to be partnering up with them like that. We've got a great new float this year, I'm not going to spoil it, no trailer alerts, but it's going to be a new look. I think it's going to be, it's going to really catch people's eyes and their hearts. Yeah, our group is looking for walkers. I mean, you know, every year that the war goes on, I mean, every year that we go on with this, we're carrying 262 names now of guys and one woman from Allen Park who were killed in Iraq or Afghanistan since 2002. Of course, we all know there's a couple of those names from close to by us in the City of Ferndale connections there. So this year, we really would like to make it, you know, one person, one sign. I mean, that's always been our goal. It doesn't seem unattainable to us, and maybe we'll get more media coverage. We got great coverage last year, Channel 4 did an awesome job for the City of Ferndale and for our parade. Got a lot of good response. So, we're meeting on Memorial Day, I believe that's May 26. Right out the corner, West Maplehurst and Livernoy. Not hard to find us. We'll be there as early as 7:00, setting up. The parade starts at 10, of course, but we really would like to have people come there by 9:30. Please wear red, white, and blue, no political slogans, religious slogans, any candidates running for office, but everybody's welcome and certainly appreciate the support of the city as always. Thanks.
So if you want someone to walk, there's not a, they don't sign up anywhere, they just show up? Is that what you're-
No, Mayor. Yep, just show up. I mean, if they do want to call us, we have a website, it's simply Michigan Fallen Foot Float, and we have a Facebook as well, but it's MI Fallen Foot Float, www.com. Or just, once you tap into that, you'll get to our other websites. They want to use that as a place to connect with us, we have an email site, or there's a phone number there as well. You'll be seeing our posters springing up everywhere. So, great. Thank you, Chief.
We can sign people up right now. Who's committed? Who's committed to walk?
Who's never walked?
Oh, we got one.
Oh, there we go.
All right. On camera.
Well, thank you, and thank you for all you do. I can't believe it's been 10 years, it just feels like it's always been a part of the parade now, and it's a really moving part of the parade, so thank you so much.
Yeah, someone else pointed it out, it's become an iconic part of the parade, for sure.
Truly, absolutely.
You're right. Be all right to let them go.
Excellent. Thank you, folks, see you on Memorial Day. Is there anyone else that would like to address council this evening? All right. Seeing none, we'll go on now to the next item of business, which is a public hearing. And this is a public hearing to adopt the Fiscal Year 2019, '20, and '21 Budget and Consideration Act. And our city manager, April Lynch, who leads this effort every year, will present this year's budget. April?
Yep. All right, let me pour it up real quick. Good evening. I believe this is my sixth present, actually, yes, it would be my sixth budget presentation with you folks. And again, I thank you, we are on our second time through as a three-year budget, within, beyond that, a two-year forecast, but in this particular presentation, we focus on the next three years of the city's budget. I think it's important to note that while I did keep these slides minimal to 13 slides, council has been intimately involved with the budget process throughout the entire time, as well as, oops, as well as our, is our staff. So while the public is just hearing about this in a presentation for the first time, we have been actually been working on this budget for almost a year. And so, we started back, actually, we always go back to the origins of where, what it is and how we're making our decisions, and as we all recall, in 2016, council did a pretty lengthy and robust strategic plan, and it continues to kind of mirror back to some of the goals and the values within that core strategic plan. So that actually happened back in October of 2016, but since then, we have two components to our budget. We have our capital plan and our general budget authorization. So we actually, as a team, worked on our capital improvement plan back at the end of October through just before the holidays, and then our departments get together and work through a budget committee internally, the months of January through March. And then by the time March gets here, we have a presentation to city council and a workshop where we work through all of the requests and what the budget looks like, and have council work with us to define and refine it as they see fit. And we actually had that on March 6th, and then last, at the last council meeting on April, was it 14th? 13th? 9th? Is that when we did it? April 9th, it was officially, per charter, given to council to file and receive and place, not only on our website, but at the library and at city hall for anybody who wanted to review that. And now we are here with our final budget presentation and approval by city council, and then we will be bringing our fee schedule in June, we're still working through all of that, but that will be brought forward on June 11th, and if there's any changes or requests to make modifications, officially approved on June 25th, if it doesn't get approved on June 11th. So again, you can see that we've had multiple hands and multiple time dedicated to this budget, and just didn't want that 13 slides to reflect 13 minutes, I hope. So with that, I think that it's important to constantly go back to the conversation that we had with our city council as it relates to our mission and vision that we really worked hard on in October of 16. A friendly reminder that our vision for the community is that Ferndale is a benchmark for a modern community that embraces the richness of diversity and brings inclusive hospitality to life. And with that, we also looked at a mission for our internal organization, is that we are stewards of progress, anticipating needs, I almost had it memorized, engage with our community and serving with excellence. Actually, on May 14th, we're going to be bringing to council an update on where we are with that strategic plan, so it's very fitting that we're moving through the budget as well as an update on our strategic plan. With that strategic plan, we also focus on seven areas, which we call critical success factors. And again, as we engage our team and council, we always make sure that we're going back to meeting those needs, and those seven factors are economic prosperity, safe, protected, and engaged community, supportive infrastructure, accessible transportation, regional partnerships, organizational financial excellence, and healthy, connected, and invested neighborhoods. So again, a lot of things go right back to making sure that we're meeting those core values. I think that we can just safely say that there's good news and bad news about our budget. I think I lead with that almost every single budget meeting. The good news is, is our taxable value is rising. The bad news in, bad news is, is we continue to struggle with the taxing structure that we have in Michigan. I think Cheryl, our finance director, put it really well when explaining what headly is. And what headly really did was try to ensure that, that while people's property taxes were rising, that we were able to, that it still costs the same amount to run a city. And so it put measures in place to ensure that as our housing market continued to rise in normal circumstances, that we were able to hold back some of that taxable value in a much more controlled fashion. As we all know, in 2008, that collapsed, and it really changed the viewpoint and how that is affecting our budget process and how we collect taxes. What they didn't take into consideration is a housing market that crashed as hard as it did between 2008 and 2010. So while there's measures to control the increase of taxable value, there was no measures to control how far that it dipped. And so we're still struggling, like most communities, to try to catch up to where we were in 2008, we're still not there. And I think that that has been the biggest challenge that not only Ferndale is facing, but all our communities in Michigan are facing, which is, you are seeing significant property increases in your homes, but the city itself cannot capture all of that taxable value. So that headly override that we've asked for twice now is still not actually going to even be sustainable as the years go on, and so we'll have to continue to take a look at that. I know that the state is starting to have conversations about that, the Michigan Municipal League as well, to really take a look at what it is that we can do to try to address some of that. So it's good news and bad news. It's good news for our, for our community that our taxable value is rising, but the bad news is, is that we're still struggling to meet those revenues, between the revenue of, losing revenue with the housing issue in 2008, we still also have a revenue sharing issue. So we have a lot of things coming at not only Ferndale, but other communities that we're struggling to address. However, I will say that we have done a great job, I believe, as a team and with council, to make efficiencies the best we can, so that we can continue to provide quality services to our resident, and that is also good news of this budget, that we're continuing to do that. And you'll see through some of these slides that we're continually investing in this community and are working through those challenges, rather than just, you know, putting our arms up and giving up and saying, "Well, we don't have the money." We're just being smarter and more efficient with our, with our dollars. So with that, I'm going to move kind of into some of the core themes for this budget. Is there any questions so far? Any comments on headly? That's a very hard story to tell, headly is very complicated. But if anybody does have any questions, any community, any residents, we would be happy, Cheryl does a really good job, she's our finance director of explaining what that effect is, and we'd be happy to go through that. So I like to go to brass tacks here, no pun intended. People just want to know, okay, what is the bottom line of the story? So in the past budget hearings, I've always gone right to, what do you want to know? So, you can see here, 17 is our current, fiscal year 17, what is, come on, completed, and we're finishing right now fiscal year 18. So our budget right now that we're approving is for 19, 20, and 21. And you'll see that we are, you saw a good drop, council lowered, was able to lower the millage rate in fiscal year 17, and we're sustaining that, and we're going to be sustaining that level of 16.9917, hopefully estimating that all the way through 2021. So, the voted will go up a little bit to make up for the loss in the headly, but for the taxpayer, they're going to still continue to see 16.9917 on their tax bill. In general, they are, you are going to see generally a decline in your millage rate as it relates to, in total, because we have quite a few different things. This is just on the city side, this doesn't include schools or the library, so just city, the organization of the city. So in fiscal year 17, we were at a high of 28.49, and you will see that when we end fiscal year 2021, our millage rate's going to be almost two mils lower, 26.5664. We'll go over water rates and sanitation rates in the next few slides. Any questions on the millage? So, general, okay. So talking a little bit about the general fund, usually, the general fund is the core conversation that we have around our budget process. However, this year, a lot of the different programming and things that happen are actually coming out of other funds. So I kind of summarize the general fund in one slide, which is that we are continuing, we've done a lot of more robust programming over the last few years that have been sustained. So right now, what we're focusing on is keeping up what we've been making in the changes. As you know, in the police department, we've brought in a community engagement officer, sustaining quality fire and police services. DPW is killing it out of the park right now with all of the parks, again, no pun intended. So general fund is still very robust and is still providing core services to our community in a much greater way and with more efficiency, but the story there is that we're continuing to be able to provide that higher level of sustainability that we've been preparing for over these last couple of years. And in general, too, we're going to be putting in about, over the next three years, $5 million of investments in capital that are above and beyond the road bond and the park bond. So again, we continue to invest in the city, and we'll continue to as years go forward. Sanitation rates, this is an interesting department, or fund, if you will. So sanitation is made up of two rates. It's made up of millage and of the, and of an actual rate. And again, because the headly, because the millage rate continues to go down, we have to make up that money through rates. So you will see minimal increases over the next few years that will be, you know, mostly going up just due to general cost, general inflation. I think it's about 1.5 or 2% throughout the next few years, right? It is 1%, each year. So those rates you'll see right now are currently in 2018, as one, for, I'll just use single family, for example, is 166, those rates will go up to 168 and 19, and then 169 and 171, respectively. One of the things we are going to be looking at as relates to sanitation is we're getting a lot of feedback about more recycling and things of that nature in the parks and in our public spaces, so we're going to be taking a look and seeing what we can do with that. And again, you can stop me at any time you have any questions. Wow, this is touchy today. Road bonds. Again, part of the millage that was passed two years ago, maybe it's almost three years now, it's kind of blending together, we have significant road projects that are going to be done over this next year. You can see here on the left that we have some, we have a few more bike lanes coming in Livernoy and Gainsborough, and then we also really excited about the West Nine Mile, where we're going to have a, another bike lane that's going to connect back to Oak Park. Another thing that we're doing this next year as part of some of the paving, we're really excited about, is a lot of our neighborhoods have been appreciating the traffic calming measures that have been taking place, and so we're going to be looking at speed humps on West Marshall, West Woodman, and West Oak Ridge. Another piece of this is that between all of the road projects, the park projects, and things of that nature, this is above and beyond DPW's core service delivery. And so, one of the things that we noticed last year was that we really needed more of a project manager on hand to address some of the road bonds, the parks, and other special projects that DPW is doing. So we have requested a project manager, which I think will also help a lot in the communication. I think that was a big concern last year, was the communication. They're going to work very closely with their engineering firm, Giffords and Webs, are so really excited about adding that part of, that, making that program a little more robust and on top of things to help our residents. Water, over this next few years, you're going to see an addition of quite a few water main replacements. You can see the names of the streets that are up there on the left. The other thing that we're going to be doing is doing a video and assessment of over 90,000 feet of sewer. With that, then we can determine a 10- to 15-year plan as it relates to our sewer needs. So we're, again, I would consider one of the most aggressive communities as it relates to maintenance on our water and sewer plan, and I think that has really been noted in the last couple of rain events where we've had minimal flooding. So we're really excited that we're going to stay on top of that, and with that, we're going to be, a big part of that is managing our assets, and we're going to be putting somebody in place to specifically address, starting with water and sewer, and making sure that we have all of our assets mapped and that they are, that we're managing that data appropriately. This will also help as it relates to getting ahead of the concern as it relates to lead in our water and things of that nature. So a lot of communities are wrapping their head around navigating, you know, where do we have lead lines and things of that nature. So we're really excited to really have a lot of data to support and to continue to ensure that we have the water and sewer infrastructure that we need to be a successful You can see over here on your right, the rates are, they continue to rise, you know, with, again, a combination of the water rates increasing as well as, you know, personnel costs and things of that nature, but we've tried to keep those costs down as much as possible. So you see in 2018, we are at, looks like 97.78, and we move up to 101, 104, 108, and 112, respectively. Any questions on water? And again, anytime anybody has any questions, any community members, we'd be happy to go over any of these departments with you in detail. The DOT, we just heard a huge presentation about that. The last council meeting, this is, important to note that this is one of the few departments that do not, they do not take any general fund money whatsoever. This is all parking, all parking rates supported, and it will continue to be so, and that is one of our goals, so, but we still have to plan and address this particular department. This is obviously with the DOT, going to see some significant changes. We're going to be issuing a bond fairly soon. During that time, we're going to be navigating the loss of that revenue on Troy Street, where we build the new lot, as well as in the end, looking at, you know, what a fee schedule would look like to accommodate all of the changes in the DOT. So still working through city council with what that looks like, doing a lot of planning and investment for ensuring that we have a sustainable, environmentally friendly parking deck as much as we can. And as well is, in this particular instant, again, taking a cue from, not only from the DOT, but from all of the major projects that we're having over the, over the course of the next few years, with all of the park improvements, what's going on over at DPW, and just in general, that our communications department is going to be adding on another person to communicate with our community. We're finding more and more, as you can see, there's hardly anybody here at the meetings, and I remember when I first started here, almost seven years ago, that we, there would be, you know, 10, 15 people here, where they're getting a lot of their information on Facebook from different sources of media, and we want to be able to meet our residents where they're at, so we're excited about that addition as well. Must have a new battery in here. Parks and Recreation, this is a little general fund and a little bond, but there's not, there's nothing little about what's going on in this department at all. I think for those who have participated in any recreation or park programming in Ferndale over the last few years can definitely see a significant change in attitude toward our park system. Over this next few years, you're going to continue to see much more robust programming. Lorena Wheeler, who's our newest, one of our newest department heads, and her team, which is almost an entirely new team, has completely overhauled all of the programs, the park system as well, is having a complete facelift, and I hope people are really enjoying that, and that's just the beginning. We haven't even started Martin Road Park, which we will be this next fiscal year, Gary Park, Wanda Park, and revisiting the skate park, and revisiting the skate park as well is going to be a significant part of these next year discussions. With that, too, we are going to be with, one of the things, looking at the Recreation Master Plan, which we don't talk about as much as we do the Master Manus Plan, people are really hungry for more programs and things of that nature. So in order for us to meet some of those goals, we are adding an additional person as well in Recreation to help more with, and this one is going to be focused a lot on our senior population, but as well as our smaller, our smaller kids as well. So we're really excited about bringing that person on. So all of the cool programs you see now, there's going to be even more this next fiscal year. The other topic of conversation with Parks and Recreation beyond parks and beyond programming is starting to have really good conversations about moving forward with what we want to do with the Kulik Center. For those of you who've been in there recently, they know it's very old, and we need to start really taking a look at what we're going to be doing with that building. So lots of Parks and Recreation conversations over these next three years is going to be a huge, continue to be a huge focus, and it's going to take, you know, a lot of, we're using a lot of our bond money as it relates to park improvements, and a lot of sweat equity over here by DPW, but I hope people have seen some of the changes that have already happened in our parks and are really excited about that. But big conversations on Martin Road this year, which the park everybody's kind of waiting for, so we're really excited about that. And with that, I go back to a start and end with what people want to know. So we, I think council has done an outstanding job of helping our team navigate priorities, as well as trying to do the best and most responsible tax rates that we can as it relates to, you know, some of the revenue concerns that we've been having. So with that, I open that up for questions, not only from city council, but this is a public hearing, and for any questions that our public might have, and our team is here to answer those questions. And it looks like we have an issue. Oh, typo. So with that, Mayor, my presentation is done, and we can open up the public hearing.
Yes, oh, yes, we have to have a public hearing. So now, with that as an introduction, is there anyone from the public that would like to address council on the adoption of the budget? See anyone? So we will close the public hearing, and then I will open it up to council for your comments and questions and considerations.
Any questions? Because I guess-
Any questions, because again, it's the third or fourth time we've been through this. But I want to congratulate you and Cheryl and Joe and the staff and everyone that, this just gets better and better every year. So thank you for all your hard work on this.
I just have a comment. I just wanted to state that this is just an example of a really smart fiscal planning, not just a couple of years in advance, but multiple years in advance. So I appreciate that, leading us on the road to sustainability. So, thank you.
Through the chair, I had one question.
Sure.
And I brought it up in one of our budget. And can you just sort of clarify how many employees we had prior and how many we have now?
We're still working on it. We're looking at old records, so we're just trying to figure, trying to figure it out so I can get that for you by next time. But we're struggling finding the right data.
Well, I too want to applaud all the effort that went into this. It's a lot of work. And then it feels like when we get time to adopt it, it feels anticlimactic, but it's only because there has been so much work. And I, of course, love the fact that it is a multi-year budget. I think that we were one of the first communities to do that, and now you're seeing more and more communities do that, and a lot more should, in my opinion, because it really does help you to see issues further out. I had just a technical thing around that, and I'm sorry for the commotion that I was causing during your presentation. But I think that technically, we can only adopt the rates and the budget for one year. We can't, we can't legally bind next year's council to rates. So, so even though it is a three-year budget and we adopt the entire thing legally, we're really only setting the rates and adopting the first year because this can change as next year. So I was asking Dan Chris to just sort of help fudge the language of some of these motions because the way they are now, we're adopting rates for the next three years and tax rates and sanitation and other rates. And I think that technically, just so council's aware, we can, we can see, it's a forecast for the second and third year, and we can adopt a projected forecast, but we can't bind next year's council to that until we get to that point. So, so Dan has been working on some, some language to just help make sure our motions reflect that. But be that as it may, this is a three-year budget with frankly, a two-year projection after that, which as we've already begun to see, if it was only three years, we would be missing some things that are going to start happening in year four and five because of this structural imbalance from, in our finance system at the state level. And so I'm really proud that we, that we approached the budget this way. And, but when it gets time to start making motions, can you share with Dan or somebody, just so that we make it clear that we're technically adopting the rates for this year? So thank you. Any other comments or questions? And so we need, there's a series of motions that we need to adopt. Is that correct?
That's correct, Your Honor.
So I'll start by moving to adopt the triennial budget for fiscal years 2018, 19, 19, 20, 21, as submitted by city manager on April 23, 2018.
So I want to suggest a modification to that, which is that we're going to adopt the budget for this year, for 2019.
18, 19.
18, 19. And the projected, I'm looking for the language. The projected forecast budget for the other two years.
Okay, even though this doesn't have anything to do with rates.
Well, because it's technically what we're doing. When you turn this over to the Department of Treasury, I believe you don't give them three years worth of our budgets. You're just giving them the one budget. So I think just to be, just to be, and I feel like we've done this in the past, I might be mistaken.
All right, well, let me revise that.
Thank you.
I will move that we adopt the triennial budget for fiscal years 18, 19, and adopt the projected forecast for 19, 20, 20, 21, as submitted by the city manager on April 23, 2018.
All right, that's moved by Martin and supported by Leaks May. Now, any discussion on that? Hope I didn't confuse that too much, but. All right, Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Polica?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you.
So then I would move to adopt the appropriations resolution setting tax rates, water rates, sewer rates, and sanitation fees for fiscal year 2018, 2019, as submitted by the city manager on April 23, 2018.
Support.
Moved by Martin, supported by Polica. Discussion on that.
Your Honor, just with respect to the typographical error, in paragraph one of that resolved section, there's a, just a reference to June 30, 2018. That should be for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2019.
Cheryl, that's correct. Yeah. You got that right. All right. Yeah, and your packet, it says 2018, but the motion is for 2019. Thank you. That was moved by Martin. Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Polica, thank you. Any discussion? Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Polica?
Yes.
Councilmember Piana?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. Now, the other motions, just for, so council's aware, is on page 45 of the budget packet that were presented. But there are some slight modifications to that. So Dan, do you?
Can I believe I have them?
Yeah.
I move that we adopt the resolution to provide the levy of taxes, water, sewer rate, sanitation fees for fiscal year 2018, 19, as represented in the packet, removing item 4B and 4C.
Report.
And 4B and 4C are simply the other two years, just to be clear. Yeah. So moved by Martin and supported by Piana. Any discussion? Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Polica?
Yes.
Councilmember Piana?
Yes.
And Leaks May?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. And that's the last motion, I believe?
Yep.
All right. We have adopted a budget. Yes, if you had your horns or whatever.
I just want to thank, though, our team who is very, they really have a handle on their budget. They're, they just did a great job on getting us what we need and are doing a really good job at forecasting it. Took them a long time and a hard time to try to forecast five years out, but now they're seeing the fruits of their labor, and they've done a great job. So thank you to the entire team for their help.
For sure. Absolutely.
If I may, through the chair.
Yes.
On that note, you and I have shared conversation, and this year, the forecast for the budget is, I think you were in five digits, like 60,000 or 70,000 in reserve, something like that. Was that correct? For the end of this year, the 2016. In years past, we've had these, you know, incredible $1.2 million that were just discovered. You know, we no longer have those kind of hidden accounts. So I just wanted to point that out, that we are getting much better on coming very close to our budget.
Cheryl ended up with pretty much a darn near perfect budget, which is awesome, but also scary at the same time. There's not a lot of room for mistake, so thank you for that.
But it, but it shows that the assumptions that we're making, the data that you're using to try to build this budget, because, you know, that's why year two and year three is a little bit of a guess. But the assumptions you're making are pretty darn accurate, and so I appreciate you using good data to help us get a good budget, so.
I couldn't agree more. I just want to clarify Mayor Proton Polica's remarks that he was cleaning up our fiscal house. We were never hiding accounts.
I didn't mean that.
I know you didn't, which is why I want to help.
Thank you for the clarification.
It's been a six-year process to overhaul our entire system to be more priority-based budgeting, and so, yeah.
We're getting there. So thank you. You guys were great as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, that concludes the budget, the public hearing and the budget adoption. So we'll move on now to the consent agenda. Consent agenda is items, these are items that council considers routine, and we enact in one motion unless council removes something from the consent agenda. So let me read that now. Item A is the approval of the regular meeting and workshop meeting minutes of April 9, 2018. Item B is the approval to appoint the interim DPW director Carlos Kennedy as representative and DPW data analyst, Dan Antosik, as alternate to the SACRA Board of Trustees for fiscal year ending 2018. Item C is the approval of the amendments to the zoning ordinance, Article 4, Commercial and Office Districts, Section 24 through 70, 24 to 71, 24 through 72, with the findings listed as submitted by our planning manager. Item D is the approval of the amended Chapter 20 Vegetation Ordinance as presented with the noted findings. Item E is the adoption of resolutions rescinding objections for the renewal of the liquor licenses for Dino Drop Inc., which is both Dino's and Dino Drop Inc. and Embrew, as submitted by our city attorney. Approval of the agreement of Black Owl LLC doing business as Otis Supply and the City of Ferndale regarding payment of outstanding real estate and property taxes, delinquent fees and interest due and owing as of March 26, 2018, and to adopt the resolution rescinding the objection to the renewal of the liquor license for Black Owl LLC. Item G is the approval of retirement in transition agreement, as submitted by the city manager. Item H is the approval of the backfilling of the Department of Public Works customer service rep. Item I is the approval of backfilling of the deputy of administration in Public Works, and now reclassified as an administrative manager. Item J is the approval of the bills and payroll as submitted by the city manager's office, subject to the review by the council finance committee. And then we added item K.
That's L.
We, oh, okay. And item K was the settlement for Posh, correct? No.
No, Deorio, Deorio versus City of Ferndale.
Oh, oh. So can you, can you offer the language for that? I'm sorry. I apologize.
It's approval of the settlement agreement with regards to Deorio versus City of Ferndale, as recommended by city attorney.
Thank you. And then finally, item A, item L is the approval of the agreement of Posh Entertainment Inc. doing business as Eden nightclub and the City of Ferndale regarding payment of outstanding real estate and property taxes, delinquent fees and interest due and owing as of March 26, 2018, and to adopt the resolution rescinding the objection to the renewal of the liquor license for Posh Entertainment Inc. doing business as Eden nightclub, as submitted by the city attorney. What is council's pleasure on the consent agenda?
I move to support the consent agenda, approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
So moved by Polica and supported by Martin. Now, any discussion on the consent agenda?
I do have a question regarding consent agenda item C in our packet, Section 2471. I just wanted to make sure that this, it was clear that, it looks like this, this section pertains to the heights of the buildings, and I'm pretty sure that I voted against that at the last council meeting. And I just wanted to make sure that that was, this was not the same thing. I mean, I don't want to vote yes on a consent agenda item for something I voted no for earlier. So can somebody clarify?
And so, because it's noted in here that she had objected.
Through the chair, the reason that's coming back is the motion that was considered didn't address specifically Sections 24-70, 71, and 72 at council's last meeting. It addressed and moved as it related to certain other ordinance changes, but.
The heights, though.
Right. Heights is in this. If you may wish to pull that particular item off consent agenda, if the councilwoman believes that she would be voting no on that particular item for those particular ordinances, those.
Or I could simply, well, it's a whole consent agenda item, but I mean, a whole consent agenda, but, so that we don't have to take time because we have other discussions, I would rather leave it on, but I would probably then be voting just no on the consent agenda. Just.
To carry.
To carry this one through, not against any other. Yes, okay.
All right. Yep, you could do that either way.
All right. Well, let's just go. Let's move on.
And just for the, to be clear, as it relates to the record, then, the, if you were to vote no, it would only be as it relates to that consent agenda item C.
Okay.
With voting, is that correct?
That's fine, yes.
But can she vote that way?
Well, trying to clear the record up on that, that issue.
Or for the record, she can, she can, she vote with.
It's in the record, she's voting no with explanation that she object to see.
And we would ask the city clerk to make note of that in the minute. Okay. All right, thank you.
You're not opposed to paying the bills.
Any other discussion on the consent agenda?
Or anything else on here?
Right, right.
All right. Do we have, yeah, we have a motion and a support. Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Okay. Councilmember, or, excuse me, Mayor Proton Polica?
Yes.
Councilmember Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
No.
Martin?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. And you've made note of the.
I have.
Yes, thank you. Very good. Moving on now to the regular agenda. Item A is a consideration of the Livernoy resurfacing project under the MDOT contract. And who is introducing that item? Carlos?
Welcome, sir.
Thank you. At the request of the City of Ferndale, portions of the Livernoy Street resurfacing project are being programmed with the United States Department of Transportation, Federal Highway Administration. The implementation with the use of federal funds under the surfaces transportation program, federal surface transportation funds shall be applied to eligible items of the following: Part A of the project, hot mix asphalt cold milling and resurfacing work along Livernoy Street from eight-mile road norally to nine-mile road, including aggregate base, storm sewer, drainage improvements, pavement repair, miscellaneous concrete curb and gutter, concrete sidewalk and ramp, and traffic and pedestrian signal work, and altogether with necessary related work up to the lesser of one, $917,652.50, or two, an amount such that 81.85% is not exceeded at the time of the award of the construction contract. Part B of the project, landscaping, irrigation, sewer trap, the bike loop installation, work within the limits, as described in Part A, and altogether with necessary related work, shall be charged to and paid 100% by the City of Ferndale. The engineer's estimate for the project is $2,015,000. The city, the city's shared base of the engineer's estimate is $1,097,447.50, while federal funding is $917,652.50. Per the contract, if the low bid does not exceed 10% of the final engineer's estimate, MDOT will award the project to the low bidder. Justin Wellman is here from Giffles and Webster, along with myself, to help answer any questions you may have.
Did it take a long time to negotiate the split of that 50 cents?
50 cents.
Are there questions of clarification on this item?
So in all of this, there's absolutely no roundabout, correct?
I don't believe so.
Thank you. I'm good.
We all enjoy our jobs, so thank you.
Question of clarification.
Yeah.
So this is Livernoy. In, in previous conversations, we've had the discussion of the intersection of Nine Mile, kind of transforming how that interacts. Is this part of the plan of kind of realigning Livernoy? That's going to be a completely separate plan?
Correct.
Project, okay. Okay. This is just resurfacing from nine to eight.
Okay. But nothing.
Well, let me, let me, there is a reconfiguration on the south side of Nine Mile.
Right.
Yes. But it, not, nothing through the private property to the north.
Yeah, no.
The reconfiguration will happen in this project.
Oh, okay. So it will happen with this.
Yes, I thought you were referring.
No, I'm not talking about north of nine. I was talking strictly south of nine.
That's a whole nother conversation.
And that's going to affect Memorial Park there.
No, the park's far enough south, it's basically between the fire station and Nine Mile.
All right. Well, you're talking about the reconfiguration. I think what we're talking about, though, is the entire project. May 3, 26 is Memorial Day. This is not going to affect.
I wasn't worried about that.
We purposely waited to June 4 to start to avoid the parades.
Yeah.
Uh, okay. Okay. Yeah, because Pride is on second. So that's good that you're waiting after Pride because Pride goes all the way up to Thank you.
If there's no other questions of clarification, a motion would be in order.
I move to approve contract number 18-5081 by and between the Michigan Department of Transportation and the City of Ferndale for hot mix asphalt. and the City of Ferndale for hot mix asphalt cold milling and resurfacing work along Livernoy Street from Eight Mile Road north, northerly to Nine Mile Road, including aggregate base, storm sewer drainage improvement, pavement repair, miscellaneous concrete curb and gutter, concrete sidewalk and ramp, and traffic and pedestrian signal work, and to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute side contract.
Support.
Moved by Piana, supported by Martin. Now, discussion. So what, what does the landscaping in this project look like?
So we worked with Justin Lyons a little bit. Because we're reconfiguring the intersection, he's had, he has planted several trees in the area that is currently pavement and creating a little pocket park right on the southwest corner there. Right now, it's pretty generic as far as just grass and those few trees, but with the option to come in after the fact and do more if the city wants to.
And is there a communication plan to manage this with the businesses and nine other businesses right there?
Yeah, so Justin has set up a meeting, two meetings actually, this Thursday with the public at the Kulick Center, one at 11:00 a.m. and then one at 6:00 p.m. this Thursday. Basically, it's an open house to come and see what's going on, ask any questions that they might have.
Well, would this be the time to, for us to talk about what else we might want to do in that pocket park? I don't even know who I'm asking that question of, but...
So as the Justin that's here today said, the Justin that's not here had set up essentially a placeholder. So we can, we can, we can talk and we can get some ideas today. What you'd be approving is allowing at least a placeholder to go forward that we could always improve and add upon, but this would allow sort of the project to move forward on schedule. But the idea was that we would give further involvement in this, perhaps even engaging, obviously, parks and recreation, to talk about what amenities would be good there and how that might fit in the larger plan, but we would certainly, if there's feedback tonight, we'd be happy to take that and work that forward.
And so I actually didn't, my colleagues may, I didn't have any specific feedback, but it just struck me that if we're going to start improving this road today, that, that we should do the park at the same time we do the, so that it all is finished at the same time, that this isn't a phased thing where we do the park next year or something. So that's just one thought.
If, if I may, I hope we also include the DDA as being, it's right there at Nine Mile. We should align the equipment, furniture, all of that with the existing, or if they are expecting to now, I, I know that there's been talk that over the next several years the DDA wants to replace some of the equipment, some, you know, different benches, different, you know, so do we work with that? So I think there needs to be a conversation with the DDA because I'd hate for us to buy brand new stuff that matches what we're doing now if there's going to be in two years or a year a complete transformation.
Or maybe it's art or something.
Sure.
Oh, that was, I was going to ask about the Pez dispenser. Are we saving that?
That is going to be, right now we locate it to the center of this pocket park area.
Okay, good.
And the streetscape in that southwest corner is being extended over for the, for that area that we're moving the intersection.
And so then, a question on Memorial Park, which I realize is sort of controlled by the Memorial Association, within the right of way of Livernoy, so it's our property that we sort of, I don't even know what the formal agreement is that we have with them, but is there any oppor, and I know that they're in the process of trying to raise funds to upgrade that section. Is there an opportunity in this project to, have we talked to them to support any kind of infrastructure or landscaping assistance that could, that would rightly, you know, be appropriate for this project? Again, I'm, I'm just asking.
We haven't had that discussion.
Yeah.
But we absolutely can, I mean, that's, we can for sure. We can do that.
It feels like the time to at least explore to them. What are you doing? What are we doing? Is there something we could do together?
Yes, and this is going to be a long, this is a long project, so we can easily start working on that pocket park right away, too. I think there was an intention to start those conversations, so it's not a huge piece of property, so it's not going to take a long time, but yeah, there's the intention, but we can definitely include them in those conversations.
Just be careful when you move the ram. I understand the top of it tilts back on a hinge and candy can come out, so just be careful.
I, I just wanted to speak to you. I know you mentioned a communications plan. Justin Lyons has been very communicative, and we've had several meetings already. This week is only the launch of that, where we have kind of this initial, hey, this project is happening, it's coming, we now have dates, but we have talked, she's already been in contact with all the business owners in that area. We've already reached out to the residents. We have information on an updated webpage, and we have a plan for regular web updates, print updates, as well as text messaging outreach in case people want to sign up for any kind of, you know, daily updates about traffic and things like that.
What is the timeline, by the way? When do we expect to conclude the project?
Final completion is the middle of November.
Middle of November? Yep.
It's a long one.
Good news, you just bought your $300,000 condo there, and we're ripping your front yard.
Good thing we're a walkable community. You need to walk to downtown.
Right.
All right. Other questions or comments?
Oh, this is great.
All right, and we have a motion and support. So Marty, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Pollocka?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Moving on now to the second regular agenda, item B, consideration of the good neighbor policy and amendments to the noise ordinance. Jordan, that's you?
Hi, council, yes. So Scott Worthington, our building official, who hails to us from Birmingham, has been working on this since we brought him in. Essentially, what this is, it's meant to really tighten up and enhance ordinance on the books in some ways, but also just to clarify with the development that we have going on, whether it's roads, utilities, or real estate, that this is infill. There's, you know, every, every project impacts people's lives in different ways, and this is just sort of a reminder to those folks that are contractors doing work that they have to be mindful of that. The inspector position that we're backfilling, one of their primary responsibilities is going to be the enforcement and monitoring related to this policy. We're looking at the job sites that we have in town, making sure sites are secured, they're safe, they're monitored, and they're clean, as much as a construction site can be, of course. The, the main, and you can see in your packet, there's some highlights there, but rigid fencing for demolition and new construction, whereas before it was just sort of that, you know, the orange mesh material, this is something a lot, lot sturdier, a lot more effective at keeping materials out of sight. And the big change here, there's two motions before you, so one is the adoption of the policy, which we, we wanted to just really drive home that this was something that, that council and that the city at all levels was behind. The other motion is actual changes to the noise ordinance to clarify construction hours. So in tightening those up, we wanted to leave flexibility for folks that were working on residential, let's say you're, you know, doing the weekend warrior thing and you're working on your home, we didn't want to limit that, but we, this is, it was sort of squarely aimed at, you know, controlling and hemming in commercial construction on the weekends. So you can see the change to the hours there. So the two motions in front of you reflect that, so one is to adopt this policy, and the other is to change the noise ordinance, as you see in the packet, related to those construction hours.
Other questions?
Just know this stemmed a lot from, we had a lot of new construction last summer, and it was, we, Kara spent most of her day fielding frustrated complaints, and we, as a team, said, you know, there's a way to control a lot of this, and we, that's where his, Jordan's department decided to kind of really shore up what we call a good neighbor policy with some teeth behind it, because we, we have a lot of construction going on, the summer's going to be even more than it was last summer, and we wanted to make sure that we could control that and to just set expectations of our, of those that are doing construction in our community right away, so there was no question about what, what those expectations were. So a huge kudos to Jordan and his team and Scott Worthington, who kind of stepped right in as our new building official to make this happen.
How will these changes be communicated to the contractors slash construction companies?
So we'll be doing basically walkthroughs before every, you know, typically we'll have like pre-construction meetings, particularly for like Livernoy or for the utility projects, but even on the, the real estate side, when a permit is issued, they'll be getting a copy of this policy, and they'll be a sort of a face-to-face with, with Scott and myself and basically just laying out like this is the policy. So they'll get sort of a warning shot, if you will, but also on the website, of course, you know, we've streamlined the CED website in the last month, is that we've kind of put things in a little more tidy order, easier to access, but we'll also be having that representative, that inspector, literally monitoring those job sites on a regular basis and communicating with the points of contact at each project.
Like Ferndale houses midstream.
Yes.
Will we go out and notify them?
Yes.
And what is the, is there a penalty for, ultimately a penalty for violation after warnings?
We, we do have penalties. I mean, they're tied to ordinance enforcement. A lot of what this policy is, it's really just sort of more assertively putting it out there and tightening it up in some ways. I mean, there's some stuff that we've been able to sort of basically have through conversation. This requires it now, so things like the rigid fencing and stuff that we've called for and just when contractors would just work with us now that they, they have to do these things, assuming this policy gets adopted.
If I may, through the chair. I have kind of a concern. So residential is 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., which I think is Monday through Sunday, which I think is really not changed, but then we have Monday through Saturday, 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. for commercial. My concern is, is the DOT would be considered commercial, so construction could happen at 10:00 p.m., well, 9:30 on a Saturday night, and all those people on, on West Saratoga are going to be furious that there's going to be construction that late at night. Now, maybe it's because of our, our project, we could restrict that because we have a little bit more control, but if there's other buildings, you know, going up adjoining, commercial adjoining residential, I, I don't want to put residents through that. Is there any way we can change that time to maybe 8:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday? Maybe give commercial an hour more? I, I just can't see commercial doing construction at 9:00 o'clock at night.
Certainly whatever council prefers.
I mean, am I, am I out of...
Just through the chair, that's, that's actually not a proposed change. It's currently 7:00 to 10:00.
Correct.
Really?
Correct.
What is being provided is now the further limitation in commercial Monday through Saturday, so that's the change as it relates to commercial.
Because it used to be Sunday as well?
Yes. So, so the, the real change is as it relates to commercial, excuse me, to residential, which is now 7:00 to 7:00, but does permit for construction activity by the owner or occupant on Sunday.
However, that doesn't mean and you can't adjust that if you want the commercial, so the question still stands.
I, I'd like us to have that conversation. I personally am not comfortable having commercial construction at 10:00 o'clock at night or 9:30.
Well, I know Scott isn't here. Do we know what is typical in communities? I mean, I know it's a balance between getting the projects done on time and, and, and not being a nuisance to the community, so...
Scott and I talked about this a little bit. It is a good question, and, and while I can't speak off the top of my head to other communities, I know Scott looked into that. The conversation we had is essentially that because this was the timeframe that's been on the books, we haven't, we haven't heard any, any issues with that timeframe, except for the commercial on Sunday, so that was kind of what we were looking to address here. Certainly, again, if, the sort of the idea that we had kind of coming into this, if council wanted to further restrict the times, we're certainly open to that. We just, we hadn't heard that there was opposition to those hours specifically, so we left them alone and we focused on just sort of limiting it as you see proposed here.
Well, and, and maybe we haven't heard a lot of, of grumblings because a lot of the projects have been commercial aligning commercial, you know, like even Ferndale House, it, it's against one residential property, but when the apartments over here on East Nine Mile go up, all those people on, on Vester are going to be really upset if there's going to be construction at 9:30 at night. I would be, you know, I wouldn't want to put up with that. One night would be one thing, but if it's happening for, you know, three, four months...
Can I make a suggestion that our team can go back and take a look and review, A, what has been happening within our community, but then take a look at some other commercial ordinances throughout some of the other...
Because I just wonder how, how often they actually do it. I, I mean, my sense is they stop before it...
Yeah, because now you're into overtime costs and such, but I, I support those staff taking back.
So, yeah.
We can still, if you won't mind, still approve this, but then we can always bring back...
That's the only issue I have, is, is that timeframe. I don't have any issue with anything else.
Absolutely. It's something we could always bring back if we get complaints, we can absolutely do.
I, I don't know if I want to wait till we get a complaint to then have to revisit.
No, in the meantime, is what I think.
Right. Yes, okay.
We'll revisit, yeah.
Right.
But you'd like us to adopt this, and then we can amend the hours.
Just because we have it getting construction season right now.
Because construction season is starting.
Absolutely, absolutely. I have no issue with that. My concern was just that one, one small little part, which has...
So we don't have a motion yet, actually.
I'll move that city council approve the good neighbor policy dated April 23, 2018.
Support.
Martin, supported by Leaks May. Any discussion or further discussion?
Councilmembers Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Pollocka?
Yes.
Councilmember Piana?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. And then there's a second motion required.
I'll move that we amend chapter two, administration article four, noise section two dash 99 of the City of Ferndale Code of Ordinances.
Support.
Moved by Martin, supported by Piana. Additional comments? I will say, I appreciate you, you putting all of this together. You know, it, it has been kind of informal because we haven't had that much construction, but this is a huge issue in other communities where they have a lot of construction. It can be a very difficult issue, so to get out in front of it as, as much as we have and are, I appreciate, and I also appreciate Mayor Proton Pollocka's concerns about the, the time, and I think that's certainly worth more discussion, but this is, I, I, I hope this will give us a level of comfort and hammer to make sure that our contractors act like good neighbors while they're here. So thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Call the roll?
Councilmembers Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Pollocka?
Yes.
Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. So that concludes the regular agenda. Next item of business would be call to council. We will start with our interpolice chief, Palazolo. Anything for the good of the community this evening, sir?
How was everybody tonight?
Wonderful.
I'm going to take you down a little walk down history lane. April 29th of 1918, the village of Ferndale commissioned its first police officer. His name was Henry Mills, and he was authorized to buy a set of handcuffs, one pistol, and a motorcycle. So in honor of that, when I told my troops yesterday, I told them we're buying them all motorcycles. We are not. What we have done is found the badge that was, that was historically the farthest one we could go back, and then we purchased a badge for everybody on the department to replicate that, so they could pin these badges on the 29th and wear them for a full year. And what I love about this badge is that everybody from the dispatcher all the way to the interim chief of police, the badge looks exactly the same. It's the same shape, it's the same color, there's just a variance in either a badge number, a rank, or a designation. So starting April 29th, you'll see these being worn proudly by your police department. I'll stick around and let you guys take a look at that one and the old one, and you'll notice how worn this thing is.
Wow. Is Officer Mills in relation to the Mills in Ferndale today?
Not a clue.
Okay.
Oddly enough, the second chief's name was also Mills, and they were not related, so there's a lot of Mills running them around, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, very good. Thank you, sir. Let's see. Lorena, anything from recreation?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just a few brief announcements. One, I wanted to let you all know that we have super brunch that's going to be on May 12th. We call it superhero academy. We're trying to really honor moms because it's the Saturday of Mother's Day weekend, but dads and sons and daughters, everybody, grandparents are welcome to attend. It's $10 per person. You'll receive brunch, you'll come in as a regular person, and you will leave out as a superhero with your identity. You will learn parkour moves because we're going to have professionals come, well, a superhero come do parkour, as well as you create your identity and everything else, and it'll be a great time. Again, that is going to be May 12th, from 10:00 to 1:00 o'clock PM. So, spread the word, hope to see you all. I also wanted to mention that fall soccer registration will open on June 11th, so you can get prepared. We had a long waiting list for our spring soccer, and so I just wanted to put that date out ahead of time, so those who weren't able to get in spring and are interested in fall soccer can get ready. In addition, I just wanted to promote our dog park at Wilson Park. There is an annual membership, so if you have a membership card and it's not working, it's because you need to renew. So contact us, that Parks and Recreation, please. And in addition, our Adopt a Garden is starting this year, and we're going to be having the first garden at Harding Park, and in the Zen New Garden area off of Inman Street. And we actually have a group of residents who are volunteers to do the, the garden this year to start it off, and they will be planting on June 11th, so I'm excited to see that. We also have a new program called Walk with Ease. We were given a grant from NRPA to train a few of our staff to actually implement this program, which is senior-based, but anybody can attend. We'll be offering this walking program on Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays, starting May 7th. It's free. We'll start with a warm-up, cool-down, the whole nine. It's an actual walking class, and we'll also have a conversation in the beginning about walking, the benefits of walking, just to help better all of our participants, and so they have the knowledge of what to do if they go off on their own and, and walk, which we highly encourage it. We will be highlighting our walking paths at Harding Park as well during one of the days at, during this program. And I think I hit everything.
Through the chair, Lorena, who, for the Adopt a Garden, which is a neat program, by the way, but who's responsible for watering the garden through the year?
Well, that would be our lovely DPW, and the participants as well. I mean, we are working on that, whether or not we're going to have some type of, of water container where they can use the spot and water it, but...
I think it's a wonderful program. I, the Beautification Commission made a discussion around it, and I think there's some clarity that needs to be brought about who's maintaining those gardens, because with the participants. So I just encourage you to circle back.
Yeah, I'll definitely do that. Um, we're...
They think we're doing it.
They think we're watering them.
So, just feedback, take back, you guys can clarify it, it's a great program.
Yeah, I definitely will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you.
All right, I'll see you May 12th.
Thanks.
Carlos, anything else from DPW this evening?
With the weather finally changing for the better, and the parks are getting a lot of use, so by this Friday, all park restrooms should be open for public to use, from May to October, I believe, which are going to be from 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
Excellent.
Again, through the chair, Carlos, the mulch you guys dropped, huge hit.
We were out in force on Saturday.
Oh, my gosh. Yeah, huge hit.
Thank you.
Joe, anything from the system, City Manager's office?
If I may through the chair. Well, it may be Lorena, this question. In the past, we've had rangers in the parks. Are we going to have rangers again, working through and checking on bathrooms, checking the cleanliness of the parks? I'm not sure if that was always arranged through DPW, or if it was through parks, I don't know, kind of combination?
It's a little bit of both. We're working together. We just talked about it last week, and HR is actually working with us as well.
Excellent.
Qualified candidates will take care of this.
Oh, good.
Great, thanks.
Yeah, it makes a big difference.
It does, huge difference.
Yeah, thank you. Good question. Joe?
Yeah, I'm here just to give a brief overview of the updated Park Ferndale website. This project was scheduled in early January. We brought Park Ferndale, which was just launched as a quick mini-site away for us to get information out on the DOT and the beginning of the project. Well, it's now been brought up to the, the city website standard, into our family of sites, so I just want to give an overview of the homepage. This is not public yet, but we expect to launch it this week. We're working with our partners to bring it over into the public realm. So this is the homepage of ParkFerndale.com. You can see we have a rotating banner right here that just kind of give highlights to certain issues. You can scroll down. We have three major users that we wanted to touch base with. If you're a resident, one click and you can go right to your residential permit information and learn more about our programs. Same with businesses. We wanted to speak directly to you and really make it easy to apply for a downtown permit. And then parking locations. We are tapping into our GIS tech skillsets, and we have developed a new interactive map of the downtown locations. If you click that, you can click through to our downtown parking system and find out all the layers of the, around our map. Another more quick way to navigate the web, and there's an events feature, and you can notice that we're publishing any event that touches the parking, the parking system, any event, special event downtown that interacts with the parking system, whether it uses our assets or not, it's going to impact the system. So you'll notice the Michigan Fall and Foot Flow Parade, that's going to have some kind of interaction and disruption with our parking system. So we want to make sure that we put that information there, because we feel calls from businesses and the public always asking about these events and how they interact with the parking system. So we are beginning to post those events here, and we'll be working to, to push how those are communicated. One thing we do want to communicate, though, is that these are non-city events, right? These are not ours, so we don't always have the best information about these events. So we're making sure to communicate that clearly and push people towards the correct and best sources of information. So you'll see that we can provide them towards the event information, and of course, for more information, you can go to the right, correct contact information.
Joe, if I may through the chair, this is great, but can we correct that? It's not the Michigan Fall and Foot Float Parade, it's the 100th Anniversary Ferndale Memorial Parade, of which the foot float is part of it. But we should really be promoting the 100th Anniversary Memorial Day Parade, which is a city event.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yep. And you'll see latest news as well, and then, of course, socials, and then there's alert subscriptions for text message and email alerts as well. We'll be promoting that, and you can see the top navigation opportunities for people to simply click through and find easily what they want to find. Resources is kind of your one-stop shop to find all the information you'd like to find on parking. Parking Deck, just one source for parking information on the deck, and then one brief contact information. You can see that looks familiar. That's a business card from the City of Ferndale, so we're very consistent in terms of our branding guidelines as well. And we expect to launch this, and this should be replacing the current Park Ferndale site this week.
Excellent. It looks great, and I would just also add that Joe got an award this week from Seamless, Seamless Gov, called the Services Beautiful Award, for things just like this. It's given to governments that are dedicated to improving the way government interacts with citizens, and this is exactly the kind of thing that qualified you for that award. And we appreciate all the work that you do, helping us to improve the way we interact with our citizens, Joe, so congratulations.
Thank you, Joe.
Congratulations.
Cheryl, anything from the Finance Department this evening? Kara, anything from Communications and Community Engagement?
Why, yes.
Why, yes, she says.
I'm Justin Lyons tonight. With cuter hair. Don't tell me I said that.
It's only recorded, don't worry about it.
But we won't say a word.
My hardest comment of the day. So I just wanted to tell everybody that May is Bike Month, and we're going to be doing our usual festivities again this year. You're going to start seeing this poster, as well as this on social media, as well as this on digital, and possibly even on some postcards throughout the city in the next couple of weeks. Justin Lyons and team, along with my department, they've come up with some really cool things this year. So they've got five group bike rides that they're going to be doing. There's the Downtown Bike Rodeo that happens with the DDA, and then they've got a bicycling 101 class that they're going to be doing. I'm told that a couple of the group rides this year are themed, and they're going to be pretty cool. One of them is a Parks Tour theme, so they're going to actually get off-bike and tour some parks and have a picnic dinner or lunch. The other one is going to be a fitness ride, so there's actually going to be some aerobic activities when they stop off at places. I believe this is going to be with Lorena's team? Well, I have, I have only basic information at this point, but, but stay tuned, because it's all going to be launched on the website this week, and we will be making an event for it on social media and making sure that we share it out with everybody. I also just wanted to mention quickly that we're going to be celebrating Arbor Day this Friday, in the typical fashion, a little bit expanded this year, thanks to Erin Quatell. So we're going to be doing some tree plantings, but they're going to happen at two parks this year. First one's going to be at Oppenheim Park at 9:00, and I'm told that's going to be Ms. Meyer's second grade class who are going to be planting. And then they're also going to do 10:00 AM at Geary Park, a second planting, with Ms. Cotta's High School Special Ed class from, I'm not sure which high school it's from, but anyway, so you guys are welcome, anybody is welcome to come out and join that and participate in the tree planting, but you'll definitely see photos and coverage of that from, from our website and our social media afterwards, so.
Excellent. Thank you. Jordan, welcome back from the planning conference. Anything to share for the good of the community this evening?
Nothing, nothing else.
All right. Dan, anything from HR this evening?
HR.
All right. Chief Sullivan, anything from the Fire Department for the good of the community?
Yes, Mayor, Council. Saturday, we had a drill with the Oakway, calling in on local police and fire for a school shooting in Madison Heights Lamp Fair School. So you had multiple police departments and fire department EMS personnel working together. Deputy Chief, or Acting Chief, Palazzolo, sent a few police officers, and we had three firefighters there. It went very well. We learned a lot, that in the chaos of what these things could be, we had 20 high school students acting as the wounded, and they played the part really well. They're acting, so they had to either drag them out or carry them out, depending on how their wounds were. But it did afford us a lot of things, from tabletop exercise to physically doing it, that we understand these things better and how quick we can move in. I think it also got some news time in that, and there's been some questions with different fire departments and police departments, but people are starting to understand we're on top of these. Public Safety's looking at them constantly and know that they're ever dynamic and changing, but we're ready, should somebody step off that side and do something really dumb like that, we're ready to take care of it and put it to an end as quickly as possible.
Great to know. Thanks, Chief. Marty, anything from the Clerk's office this evening?
Yes, actually, I would like to announce that my deputy, Barb Miller, has received her first certification as a clerk. And she has been, done three years of institute at the Michigan Association Municipal Clerks' Basic Institute, so she's learned a ton of stuff, and she is now a certified Michigan Municipal Clerk.
Yes. Give her our congratulations, please. April, anything from the City Manager's office?
I have a couple of things. I already stole my thunder on Joe, so thank you for that. So again, congratulations, Joe, for all your hard work. I wanted to just acknowledge that, you know, we have been talking a lot about some of the policy review for the Police Department, and we're well under our way. Chief Palazzolo and I have been meeting with multiple organizations who can help us do some assessments of the department, and we're excited that, we hope to have some kind of recommendation to City Council by May 14th, if we can. If not, it'll be shortly thereafter, but I think we've been pleasantly surprised and excited about what those opportunities will bring. So I just wanted to make sure that council and the public knew that we are moving forward with a lot of those conversations, and it's going very well. So, that is my first thing. One of the things I wanted to acknowledge as well is that it's rare that City Council falls on a holiday, but it just so happens that it does fall on Memorial Day this year. So I am, right now, we technically are scheduled for Tuesday, May 29th. However, I am wondering if council may want to reconsider that, just due to the summer holidays tend to be busier for the general public and for City Council, if you will, to see if they would like to cancel the May 28th meeting, and we, we have, we still have our required two meetings on Monday, May 14th, where we have our regular meeting, as well as we have a work session that's already scheduled for, for 5:30, and I didn't know if council wanted to have that conversation today, and if so, then if they're interested, we can have a resolution on May 14th to modify that. Otherwise, we can keep it on Tuesday, May 29th.
I'm supportive.
I'm supportive.
I am supportive. What's the work session?
It's going to be our update on our strategic plan, and then maybe a few little ancillaries that we might need some direction on, but for the most part, it'll be our strategic plan update. So we need some time for that, too. And then Monday, May 7th, is also a bus tour that we're taking with City Council as well to kind of go over all of the development within the community. So there'll be multiple meetings in May.
Yes. All right, I think council is supportive of that, so I'll go ahead and make a resolution for the next meeting.
We will do that. Perfect.
Thank you.
That's all I have tonight, thank you.
All right, great. Dan?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
All right. Councilman Martin?
Couple of things. Joe, congratulations, it's well deserved. Also, send Barb our congratulations. She's doing a wonderful job with the Housing Commission and with the Planning Commission, so I appreciate her. Two other things, it's been a while since we've seen the Ferndale Public Schools here, and I know they're in the middle of a strategic planning session, so can we make a formal request that they come and provide an update to council? And then lastly, the Ferndale Community Foundation has community grants applications available. The easiest way to find them is on the city website, and the submission date is May 25th. If there's any questions, you can call me at 248-672-4067, or email me through the city website. Thank you.
All right. Councilwoman Leaks May?[1660.32]